All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Meeting has been noticed. Evans Sprint Media Group, WCOW Radio, Magnum Radio, Cross Tribune, Sparta City Hall, and Sparta Free Library. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as stated?
So moved. I'll second it.
A motion for Mr. Scholesy, a second for Mr. Burns Gilbert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. 5-0, Mr. Wells and Mr. Henderson.
Oh, Mr. Henderson.
Yep. Please, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
And Sam, could you please remind us of the SAS Emission Statement?
Yes, to educate all students academically, emotionally, and socially to inspire curiosity and resilience.
Do we have any public input?
I believe we do not have any public input. And just a reminder, if you could speak up a little bit more, our last meeting's audio was not the best. We changed some equipment up and did a little thing differently, but if we could speak up a little bit more, or maybe even talk that way, that would probably be good.
Moving on to reports. WIN and Open Gym Report. Holly Church.
So, this is Holly Church. Holly is in charge of our WIN After School and All Day WIN program, and she also did all of the coordinating for our Open Gym this year. So I will turn it over to Holly.
Push there.
Yep.
All right. Hello, everyone. So this is going to recap our year last year, and I'm just going to go through building by building. Southside Early Learning Center, we offered programming both before and after school. Throughout the year, we served 67 students. That wasn't necessarily all at one time. That could be kids that started the year and then dropped out. Our activities focused on reinforcing what they were learning in the classroom, number and letter recognition, letter sounds, and playing with their friends. And we are staffed by school day staff, community members, and high school students. Mostly, high school students. Halfway through the year, we started doing centers two days a week that they worked on different skills and rotation, practicing, again, the letters, the numbers. Art projects were included in that.
And working on practicing their SEL skills.
Yes.
How to work together, how to get along, problem solve.
How to work through problems that they can work through on their own. He has the toy I want. Okay, let's see how we can work through that together so that you don't need to get an adult every time. After you've tried these skills, then you can come get help. Moving on to Montessori, it was a huge jump from the year before. We served 71 students, in part because we started serving the 5th and 6th graders from Meadowview that were bussed over. And this year, we'll be adding pre-K, so it'll be fun to see where those numbers land. We had 15 students from Meadowview come over, and again, we were staffed by school day staff, community members, and high school students. At Montessori, they practice reading and math through hands-on activities, such as creating a boat out of materials that they had to budget for. The aluminum foil costs so much, the tape costs so much, and they were given a budget to work within. We also explored clubs over there, including Lego Club, Cooking Club, Braille Club. One of our employees is legally blind, so she led a club teaching Braille, and she'll be expanding on that this year with some other projects and activities. And then my favorite project from the year was a birdhouse project, where they started the project by researching the birds that live in our area, how they eat, what type of bird feeders they're attracted to. And then with help from Mr. Frazee, he cut the pieces for birdhouses, and our kids assembled them and painted them. And we will be placing them outside of Montessori when we return. And then Herman offered programming before and after school. Throughout the year, we served 179 students, partially funded through the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. And our focuses include connecting to the school day, reading practice, art projects, STEM, writing, physical fitness. And because we have the grant funding, we do dive a little deeper into some data. So up here, you'll see 50% of our students are classified as economically disadvantaged. 8% are English learners. And they look at their math and reading scores. 43% of our 4th graders showed improvement in both math and reading. And then we do also have to report on their school day attendance, and there was improvement in 29%. And thus, learning engagement is based off a teacher survey that is distributed at the end of the year, and teachers noted that 69% of our students had an increase in learning engagement in the classroom. And then, these questions are from the students themselves and families. 100% of our students report that they felt safe while at WIN. 83% felt like they belonged and were welcomed. 92% report that they feel like there's at least one adult or high school student that they can talk to. Our parents mostly feel like the kids are cared for when they're at the program. They also pointed out that kids tried new things they may not have otherwise tried, and they felt more welcome at Herman based on their interactions with the staff from We work with several partners in the community, and we're always looking for more. Sparta Free Library comes to all three sites. April from the UW Extension Foodwise program comes to Herman. 4H, we started a partnership with them at Montessori this past year and hope to continue that and grow it to other sites. And then, for the last two years, we partnered with Sparta Parks and Rec where they come and do kind of an intro to the different activities they do to also hopefully boost their numbers. Questions about WIN? We opened registration at 5:00, and based on the staff we had, we had to close it for Southside already, so if you know anybody looking for afternoon work, send them our way. And I'm sure I'll be checking throughout the night as emails come in. And we are opening on September 3rd. And then, a little report from Open Gym last year. We serve children in the community, ages 4 to 18, open Saturdays and Sundays. The attendance really varied on the weather. The nicer the day, the lower our numbers were, as little as zero. And then, when the weather was a little more yucky or cold, we saw upwards of 40, but an average fell between the 25 and 30. We'll resume starting on October this year. Open most weekends through the third weekend in May. Will be closed when the district is closed for an extended break or federal holidays.
Quick question. Yeah, as far as the Open Gym, did you have trouble staffing that at all?
No.
So no problem with that?
No.
But when you're, there are some concerns?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
The Open Gym was staffed by school day employees.
Got it.
Apparently, they're more willing to work on the weekends than after school.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I know I've seen maybe a Facebook post or different things. How are we encouraging people to come to the Open Gym, or just letting people know that it's reminding parents, you know, that it's available? And is it open to, is it like a fund 80, so it's open to anyone in the community?
Yep. It is open to anyone in the community. Yes.
So when we first started it, we kind of did like a soft launch for the first, I think, three weeks, and we just, I think we just put it out on the Facebook page, and we kind of left it at that. And then after that three weeks, then I sent a message to the principals at all of the schools, including the private schools, and, you know, with all the information and asked to ask the principals to include that in whatever form that they communicate with their families. So then we had Facebook and whatever the principal's communication was. As far as revisiting and sending it often, maybe didn't do that the best. I know there were, were there some posts, Liz, throughout the year, reminding?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Because of the wide age range, do we have any issues with the groups commingling?
Uh, no, we se-
Or because of the different activities?
We separate. Ages 4 to 10 are accompanied by an adult, and they're in the multipurpose room. And then, 11 through 18 are in the gym, and I didn't hear of any problems, because that's still quite an age range, but it worked.
Any other questions for board members? Thank you.
All right.
This is one more quick one if I could. Since this was the first year doing it, I mean, going into year two, would there be any improvements that you would make based on what you saw last year?
Um, I guess I, we are thinking of maybe shortening the time that the staff get there ahead of time. We had them coming in a half an hour early that we found wasn't needed. And I think I would want to look at our sign-in process. We had families and students sign in. With a phone number in case something happened, we had somebody to get a hold of, and that kind of got forgotten. So whether that's retraining the staff that are working or making the sign-in sheet more clear.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions or comments for board members?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. It'll be under reports. July 1st, 2024 State Aid Estimate Report. Let's hold it.
All right. So, a couple weeks ago, DPI released our July 1st State Aid Estimate, so I just wanted to walk you through a quick refresher ahead of the annual meeting of what state aid is, what the estimate means, and then what our estimate is. So, state equalization aid is provided under state statute. It's the largest part of the state budget in Wisconsin. And the goal of it is to reduce reliance in the local communities on the local property taxes to fund schools. So the state takes on the burden of funding the majority of the school cost. And its other goal is to equalize the playing field between different communities so that, regardless of the tax base, everybody has the funding needed to provide that base level education. What state aid doesn't do is increase our budget. So our budget is set by the revenue limit, which is made up of state aid and the local tax levy. So if state aid goes up or down, the tax levy goes up or down other direction, but it does not increase our overall budget. So this is just a graph showing the history. The total of the two bars is our revenue limit. The purple would be the state aid amount, the blue would be the tax levy amount. You can see over the past three years, and we've talked about this quite a bit, we've really been maximizing the state aid amount that we've been receiving. A lot of that has been through managing our levy. So, per state statute, by July 1st of each year, DPI must publish a aid estimate to schools. If you ask schools, it's kind of silly, because DPI doesn't know a lot of the information yet to be able to give our accurate estimate. So they give this estimate, but it's based on all of the district's budgets that they submitted to DPI, which budgets may or may not be accurate. And so, the school personnel don't get real excited about this, but it is kind of a headline maker provided under state statute. So, what I and many other business managers do is we get the estimate, and then we go back to all of our budgeting tools, and we basically prove it out to see how accurate it is, which is what I'll go through with you in a couple minutes here. We won't know our actual state aid amount until October 15th, which is already in that annual meeting window. What we do know is that because we were successful with our operating referendum, our revenue limit for this coming year will be $11,000 per student, which is an increase of about $675 a student. And we also know our per pupil categorical aid, which is our other biggest portion of state aid, which is outside of the revenue limit, so that does equal additional revenue. That had no change for this coming year for the per student. So, if you were to look at DPI, it would say that our July 1 state aid estimate was After going through those numbers, our actual state aid estimate, according to my calculations, is much greater. And upon, kind of just knowing the process, what happened with Sparta is in the transition to the new skyward. Basically, previously DPI would get the budget data from all districts by district submitting spreadsheets. And about a year ago, they switched to where they automatically pull the data out of our software, similar to how they pull student data. They didn't have the connections yet for cumulative, so they didn't get our budget correct because it wasn't pulling correctly out of our new software. So that's why our estimate is not reliable, because they didn't have all of the correct So, when I plugged in our actual budget data for the budget that you just saw a couple weeks ago, this is a more accurate number. I will say this is still a budget though, and still very preliminary. The things that will continue to change over time is we're going through our annual audit this week, so that we'll know for certain our revenue and expenses, although I don't anticipate them changing greatly. We still need our property value certifications. And then, the final piece is, if you remember, state aid is like a pie, and it gets to be out amongst the districts. We don't know yet the primary, secondary, tertiary is basically how they divvy it out, and we won't know that either until October 15th. So this slide is summarizing where we're at currently with estimate based on where we had actual last year. So our revenue limit is going up about $2.75 million. If you remember back to our operating referendum presentations, that's right on prior with what we thought. We thought the changes to the revenue limit formula would be about $2 million. We asked for $750,000 in operating referendum, so that still is playing out as proposed. State aid, however, is much more favorable than what we thought during the operating referendum process, which is a good thing, because that means what we communicated is a tax levy impact, it will actually be less than that. So you can see there, Melery at the very bottom, that's what everybody gets excited about. This year, we were at $6.92 throughout the operating referendum. We said about $8.22. You can see the current estimate has it under $8 quite a bit. Again, this is an estimate. We will continue to know more and refine as we get to October, but the long and short of it is property values increased more so than the conservative estimates. Remember, when we're estimating for referendum purposes, we estimate a 1% increase, was closer to a 10% increase. We estimated if expenditures stay the same, we know we spent more. So, again, we go through these referendum processes, budgeting very conservatively, and this speaks to that fact that we do budget pretty conservatively when we're talking about how it will impact Melery's. Are there any questions?
Any questions for board members?
Yeah, real quick, Ms. Hauser. So, yeah, we had estimated 822. How would we, how will we convey that out to community, and what's the thought process? Is that going to be part of your roadshow when you're going out talking about the facilities referendum at all, or what are the opportunities that you're taking advantage of?
Um, I would say, as we get closer to October, that will be something we would, I would feel more comfortable talking about, because we're still pretty early in the budget process cycle, so I don't want people to hang on to the 746, because that could still continue to swing as more variables come in. But what we do know is 822 was conservative, and there's a very, very high likelihood that we won't come near that.
Just a quick follow-up to that. Do you see that number increasing considerably, or would it be minimal if it increases at all?
I would say yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That'll be part of our communication planning as we go. This is all new information within a business day. So, we'll continue to, through our teams, we'll say, hey, this is what was communicated, how do we do that, what is best practice, but we'll continue to monitor as we get more information and more on that message. But preliminarily, very good. Very good.
Thank you. Any other questions for board members?
Yeah. Just going to go with-
Can you explain the cumulative disconnect again, like why that was off by 3.5 million?
And that's since the two software's weren't talking. So-
So our estimate was lower because the software's weren't talking, basically?
But the estimate doesn't equate to any funding. It-
Just to raise you up. Right.
Um, it's basically, so when they release the estimate, they actually release the whole spreadsheet, and then it's up to the districts to go in and confirm all the numbers. So, I just would emphasize, don't get too excited about the July 1 state aid estimate, which is something I emphasize every year, whether the data pulled correctly or not. So, and not only I emphasize that, all of us school districts emphasize that. So, basically, our estimate was skewed, but all that means is it was more work for me to verify what it actually should be. Basically, you just don't take it at face value, go to the updated one.
But not something that we anticipate next year, because the program in place and it's is-
Right.
We wouldn't be transitioning.
Yep. Yep.
Thank you. I just want to be clear. These numbers are based on the past $750,000 operated referendum, but have nothing to do with the facility referendum.
Correct. That is correct. This is only, yes. So that, Melery, of the 746 is all three buckets together, but really, the only variable that I'm talking about is the first bucket of that. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions for board members? If not, we move along to the consent agenda. Please take a couple moments and look through. Until you're comfortable with consent agenda, we'll take a motion and a second.
I'll move to, or I'll make a motion, move to accept the consent agenda, or approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion from Mr. Burns Gilbert, a second from Mr. Scholesy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Scholesy?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Burns Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 to Evans. Business, discussion and possible actions will improve policy 2264 nondiscrimination on a basis of sex in educational program or activities effective August 1st, 2024. Sam?
Uh, yes, a little history on this one. In June, the Federal Department of Education released a new Title IX guidance with a expectation effective the 20th, August 1st, with full implementation, training, and that sort of thing. Well, since then, there's been several lawsuits, litigation against some individual states. Wisconsin is not one of the individual states, however, one of the courts did rule that a, any student, this is where it gets a little muddy, any student of a Moms of Liberty member that school would be, that would be, would have an injunction of being required to implement the new guidelines. So, we did a first read on Ju-, July 8th. The board did not take any action, but they said, let's have a workshop where we'd be able to dive into it maybe a little bit more, ask a little bit more questions. So on July 15th, we had a workshop, talked over some things, and really no recommendation coming out of the, out of the workshop. Well, let's fast, let's back up till Friday of this week. We had a, got word from our attorneys that the courts ruled that the Moms of Liberty now have until the 26th of July to submit lists, because the initial list that was out was only select high schools in the state of Wisconsin, we'll say that. It was not any elementary, any middle school, or anything like that. So, the courts went back and forth with the Department of Education and Moms of Liberties and other groups, and the courts decided to say, wait a minute, Friday, we'll have more information on Friday about additional schools or districts, because they're still trying to figure out if it's schools versus districts, because you can possibly imagine that if a school district has, we're just going to say, in our district, Southside and Herman and Montessori on one Title IX regulation, and Meadowview ISA sales, and the high school on another Title IX regulation, that may cause some question. The courts are trying to figure those things out, so right now, we're trying to figure out more guidance waiting for the courts. The courts also reminded the Department of Ed that they can push back the start date, the August 1 start date. So, through this process, we're still learning. There is nothing legally that precludes districts from adopting these regulations, new regulations. However, they are not forced to compel with the regulations as it was initially thought in June. So, so right now, we're kind of in limbo in regards to, we're not required to mandate this adoption right now, and at August 1st, because we're waiting to see if the Sparta Area School District or some of the schools will be on the Moms of Liberty list. And I hope I'm saying that correctly, and there's another organization that's there as well. So, it's kind of up to the board now. We can adopt the regulations as is. As I shared, we had Neola's version of 2264, which we're a Neola member. However, we did talk with Bob Butler from WASB and recrafted the language to make it more generic, to make it fit. Doesn't matter what the regulations, if it's the 2024 regulations, it doesn't say 2024, it says the Title IX regulations. So if in 2025, we get new regulations, we're not necessarily coming back here striking 2024 in 2025. I'm not saying that is one way or another, but we have some, we have some ID, we have some, we have some decision points, if the board wishes, in the language, in the, in the actual policy. For example, the definition of sex does not have to be identified at all in that policy, or we can list out the five changes specifically that the 2024 regulations are. So, I think, Lisa, is that pretty much?
That's a good summary.
Summary?
It's been with lunch.
We've gone through some of the legal changes of the 2024. The courts also said in their legals, if we don't, if it does come to on Friday of this week, or Monday of the next, whenever we get the decision that we do have to do the August 1 deadline or not, if they do say August 1st, we're going to do our best to get it. No school has ever been, as far as we know, withheld for purposely, or not purposely following Title IX regulations. If they acted on the 29th, for example, we act on the 29th, we're going to put a plan in place as soon as possible, because we do have activities starting up on the 1st. So, we're going to do our best to, to make that happen. The training will continue. You know, there's a lot more compliance on there. Changing in the grievance process is probably the other biggest one. But pending any litigation or injunction, the Department of Ed regulations stand, and they have the full fence of, of the law. But right now, we're in limbo, and that's kind of where we're at right now.
Any questions or comments for board members?
Sam, or Mr. Rest, you mentioned, can I make?
Lisa.
Thank you. Mr. Rest, you mentioned that training will continue. Are we, are, is the district currently training for the new regulations, or have we put a pause on that to see?
We are, we put a pause on, Lisa Mullen and myself and a couple other administrators went through the coordinator training. That was all before this with the plan. Right now, since we are kind of in limbo, we have pushed pause on, we haven't even purchased the, the training yet. So, we are on pause, however, we- However, we have a PO ready to go when we need to from WASB to do it. Ms. Mullen and I were trained through Rainey, Lewis, and Lacy, Ms. Lefler's law firm, and the next training is on the 6th of August. So we'll know a lot more by then as well. So we have not formally trained any of our principals as investigators even, and none of the staff members. That's what we're kind of waiting to get this, to get this all figured out through courts. We're really in a waiting pattern with the courts, and I understand that puts the board and the community in a lot of different situations. It puts our administrators to see, you know, Lisa and I are trained on the new regulations. Now, we got to refer back to the old regulations. So it may behoove the board to wait until Monday of next week, if we can get together. We may have, I may have an email when we leave here that the Department of Education has put the implementation date in January. If the board does decide to move forward with a policy change, we'll say for 2264, today, it would be my recommendation, based on the information we know, to make it generic. So doesn't matter what the ruling is, we would still have a new policy effective August 1st, whatever that may be. If the injunction is in place.
That's 2264.
64. Yep. If the injunction is in place, we're still covered under a policy, because it says we're going to follow Title IX regulations. That would be my recommendation if we, if the board decides to adopt the policy tonight. Having 20, having 2024 regulations in there, that may be a little bit of a gamble, because if we have that, and then it becomes strike down, and then it kind of puts us in, and then we may have an emergency meeting on the 20th, on the Monday anyway, just to undo the policy that we get. So, or I guess if the board wants to have that 2024 policy, doesn't matter the injunction or not, they have every right to do that, it's just not mandated that we do it. I will thank you. That makes sense.
I heard a recommendation in there. That was the pause, right?
Yep. I talked to Bob Butler, he goes, and Mike, and he said he might want to hold off from getting their training, might want to hold off. And it makes us feel a lot better that if we're not in full compliance by the 1st, we will have a plan, and I'm like Coach Dowell with football, he may already have it in place. So yep, we're going to have an hour presentation here, because I was told that it's about 50 minutes.
That was another question, does the staff know that they might have to be trained?
Yes. Well, we've communicated athletics, we haven't explicitly stated, we usually do our Title IX training in the beginning of the year in service, but with the implementation date of August 1st, that's going to push some things ahead. Show choir, a camp, musical camp, that's all part of anybody working with kids, as fast as we can, doing it the right way, we're going to get them trained, including our administrators, that would be the investigators, I need to do it for the decision makers, informal resolution process. So there's a lot of training that would have to take place one way or another. And if we have an injunction, we just refresh on all the trainings that we have in the past, until the injunction's lifted or they're thrown out. So, and if, one more thing, so since the August 1st deadline is up in the air, if the board does not act on this, on 2264 tonight, I know I'm jumping ahead, but I would also recommend not having any action on 2266, because one, they had followed each other. Sorry.
Please stop. No, that's fine. So yeah, I think that's kind of where my standpoint is with it as well, speaking with Mr. Russ, hearing what you have to say throughout all this, I almost feel like we're jumping the gun if we try to do anything tonight. We should hear what, what the federal government has to say, or the courts have to say, and then report from there. So that's my feeling on it as well. And are we going to set a Monday meeting, or is that only if we hear something?
I think we would need to set a Monday meeting one way or another. I would like to plan a Monday meeting. If we know, for instance, the courts or the Department of Ed says, you know what, January 31st, 2025, I still think we meet. Or we know that earlier, talking with Mr. McKenna, but we can always talk and meet for next steps and that sort of thing.
So Mr. Russ, would you prefer that we just leave it and don't say anything, or would you prefer that we make a motion to table this until the special meeting on July 29th?
That would be perfectly fine by me if the 29th works for the board members. I know Mr. Wells and Mr. Hendricks are not here. Mr. Wells should be joining us shortly. Mr. Hendricks is not available. It's my understanding, taking a straw poll before that the 29th, 29th works for other board members.
Well, that was the other part of it for me, is we don't have the two of our board members to have that discussion with. So I would make that motion. That's, okay?
So table 2264?
Yes, 2264 until the special meeting on July 29th at 6:00 p.m.
That will be here as well, because Meadowview will not be done.
Colin, is that?
A motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion for Mr. Schulze, second from Mrs. Lopez, for comments or discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Schulze?
Yes.
Ms. Behrens?
Yes.
Mr. Burns Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Business B, discussion as possible action to approve policy revisions to 2266 nondiscrimination on a basis of sex in educational programs or activities. Play the answer.
Without rewinding and pushing play, I would recommend, based on the motion and based on the action of tabling 2264 until the 29th, I would recommend a similar motion instead of 2264, 2266.
Mr. McKenna, I'd move to table policy revisions to 2266 until the special meeting on July 29th at 6:00 p.m.
Second. Motion for Mr. Schulze, second from Mr. Burns Gilbert. Do we have any further discussion?
I will have, after diving into 2266, I found some old policies in there. I don't confuse why they're in there, but I'm meeting with Neola tomorrow with some future policy updates. So we may be getting, most likely will be getting a different policy, 2266 revisions, instead of the articles, the three-digit articles. I don't know how we missed putting in like 5517, 2216, and that sort of thing. So, but no, I got to dig into it. So that may, they may have some, and that may even be a technical change that we need to do. So just to give you a heads up.
Any further discussion from board members? Is a roll call placed?
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Schulze?
Yes.
Ms. Behrens?
Yes.
Mr. Burns Gilbert?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 to absent. Business C, discussion and possible action.
I saw 87 million, I can't beat charge that one.
Discussion and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the school district to issue a general obligation bond in the amount not to exceed 87 million dollars. Sam?
From the recommendation, from the committee of the whole, this was the recommendation. The top half is something that is statutory in nature, we can't really change it. We changed a couple wordings on that with the copy and paste. But the main part was, is that construction of an addition to Sparta High School and demolition of a portion of the original 1962 building, renovations and capital maintenance of district buildings to include acquisition of related furnishings, fixtures, technology, and equipment, ADA upgrades, and safety and security. So we worked with Quarles and Brady on the official language on this, and after talking with Quarles and Brady, this is what they would recommend. Very small changes, but this is the legal ones that they would recommend. The top is basically, once again, the building and facility improvement project consisting of, everything above that is statutory, we need that. And then we go into construction of an addition and renovations to Sparta High School, demolition of a portion of the current high school building, renovations, site improvements, and capital maintenance of district buildings, including ADA, safety, and security upgrades, and acquisition of related furnishings, fixtures, technology, and equipment. Okay, Mr. Wells?
Okay.
And the one thing that Quarles and Brady said was, is that we could remove fixtures if we wanted to, because that's already included in the other line.
How many fixtures?
Yes, we have to keep furnishings, technology, and equipment. We can keep fixtures in there too. So this is the recommended language. It's very similar, but just with some nuances. And as a reminder, once we finalize the language, we're going to have a special meeting on August 12th, as planned, and then you're going to get the official resolution and all the legalese and everything like that. But the first part is finalizing the question, and then we'll get the question into the formal resolution.
Any questions or comments from board members?
And the one thing, if we do change some language, which is perfectly fine, we would have the ball set off of Quarles and Brady again, and then we would still plan on the 12th. We would, we would put that all in action. We would just have to move a little bit forward.
I like the adjustments. I think Quarles and Brady did a good job, and I think it's still hitting on every piece that we wanted to hit on, of making sure the ADA parts and safety, I mean, so I mean, I feel comfortable with where, with where we're at.
Any other comments? Ms. Lopez?
I don't mind the wording changes at all. I think there's just a couple tweaks, like you said. I believe that Mr. Hendricks, was it at the last meeting, or was it at the committee meeting, had mentioned the order of the last items, and perhaps putting ADA and safety and security at the end, so that they don't get lost in the mix. And I don't know if that would be a change that the board would like to see, or if we would need to go back to Quarles and Brady if we just changed the order there, but you know, if it were to read, including the acquisition of related furnishings, fixtures, or maybe even acquisition of related furnishings, technology, and equipment? Oh. Never mind. I think it gets a little.
I think apart from you with, with having ADA, safety, and security where it is, it's linked to the district buildings.
Yeah, that's why, when I read it aloud, it makes sense. So I take that back, sorry.
Semi-colons mean thing, and it is, and that's why we talked to Anderson.
Did I miss, was there a reason they recommended taking out the 1962 portion of the building?
In these projects they mentioned, just in case they do find something that's goofy.
Sure.
And all of a sudden, you know, for instance, they need to do something with the greenhouse, for example, that's not part of the 62 built addition. As they dig in, they might find some, that's why, not to limit yourself to the original scope. People may say, what, that's, what is this the scope? Is that the scope? So just be more generic. Now, our messaging will be the 1962 portions of the building, which is our message has been consistent that entire time. So the next step after we get, is putting the communication plan that matches that. And you start, which part are you demolishing? This part?
Any other questions for board members? Right now, I entertain a motion.
Move to accept the recommended changes per Quarles and Brady. Second half.
Motion for Mr. Burns Gilbert, second from Mr. Wells. Any further discussion?
You on it with fixtures or without fixtures?
I like.
I think, yeah, the way it's, the way it's stated, I think this one. Your roll call, please, one.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Schulze?
Yes.
Ms. Behrens?
Yes.
Mr. Burns Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0, one absent. Discussion and possible action to approve budget revisions for the 2324 school year? Ms. Houser?
Right. Mr. Russ presented the budget to you at the committee of the whole. Since that time, we had finished our final payroll, and we still had about a week and a half worth of invoices we were collecting that came in after July 1. We have now officially closed our books. The audit started today. We did have five relatively large invoices come in that did not have open purchase orders. The reason I won't get into, but the long and short of it is, we had five large invoices come in, which basically swung our budget kind of back the other direction to where we were about a month ago. So in June, we were projecting being about 200,000 expenses over revenue. We ended at about 160,000. Overall, this is positive. We started the year thinking revenue stabilization, meaning we were expecting our expenses would be 575,000 more than our revenue. We ended with them being 160,000 more. So overall, positive, that means we have more fund balance rolling into next year than what we had originally anticipated, and I just wanted to give that update. And then I just made formal approval of the final budget for 2324.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Ms. Houser, I just have a quick question. And I'm maybe jumping back a little bit. We talked about state equalization, and we were, state was estimating 25, we're at 29. Will that affect your budget estimates moving into next year at all? Are we still planning for a major shortfall, or did that help?
Good question. It did not help because it reduces the tax burden, it doesn't change our total budget. Yeah, although the estimate seemed really off, like the 3 million a shot, when you compare it to our actual state aid amount from last year, our state aid went up about a million bucks, which is.
Yeah.
The estimate was just really off. But if you compare last year's actual to this year's re-thought estimate, it's reasonable. Thank you. Yep.
Further question, questions or discussion for board members?
Hi, I have a question. Ms. Houser, without going into why there were open purchase orders, well, is there, are steps being taken to ensure that?
At purchase.
Okay.
Good.
Any further questions or discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the final budget revisions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion for Mr. Burns Gilbert, second from Mr. Schulze. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Schulze?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Behrens?
Yes.
Mr. Burns Gilbert?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0, discussion and possible action to designate classifications of fund balance as of June 30th, 2024. Ms. Houser?
All right. This also was presented at committee of the whole. I didn't make any updates. I just wanted to go through it once more to make sure we all understood. So for our fund balance, we are required, under government accounting standards, to designate it in five different ways, through non-spendable or restricted committed, assigned, unassigned. Non-spendable and restricted mean it's tied to grant dollars or other governmental restrictions. So those two, we don't have control over, they just tie out to whatever our prepaid expenses were, and our current school funds, and those are for DTI. Assigned means the board needs to take action to set aside those monies in fund balance. And this is where, if you recall, last month when we did our insurance renewals, we talked about our deductibles for insurance were increasing, and my recommendation was that if we go with that as a renewal, which overall saves us money every year, that we set aside money in fund balance, so should we need it, we don't run into a budgetary crisis in the year that that would happen. So I'm recommending that the board assign $150,000. That comes with just a little bit more. That comes with just a little bit more power, I guess, than revenue stabilization. So, revenue stabilization is still in that unassigned bucket, where assigned just comes with a little bit more disclosure in our financial statements, so constituents know that that money really is not available. And then, unassigned, we can, I'll say bookmark it, so it's still available, but it says that, if we give it a designation, it just says, but we have a plan for it, kind of thing. And so, that's where, per our operating referendum communications, we talked about we would have a $1.1 million shortfall, we would plan for that with revenue stabilization, so that $1.1 million is to keep the consistent messaging from the operating referendum in the spring, and then any remaining balance we would designate as for cash flow purposes, and that true remaining balance will know after the conclusion of the audit this week. So, that is the general fund. As far as all other funds, all of our Fund 39, 46, 49, 50, and 80, all of those funds are non-spendable or restricted, which is that highest classification. And so, the recommendation, I apologize on the screen, I should have that 150,000 of assigned too, so when you make your motion, if you could say 150,000 of assigned, 1.1 million to revenue stabilization, and then everything else is presented.
Questions or comments from board members? Mr. Burns-Gilbert?
I just was looking at the Fund 80 there. So, does that mean we're about 100,000 left from that, from this year? And then, my question was, is that, can we use that to raise the wages to get more staff to, if we're at a wait list, that's where, really, are we planning to use, I know Fund 46 is different, 49's permanent, right, so that's the very different layers, but I just curious if you have any thoughts on that.
Yeah, so Fund 80 on our, like, spreadsheets that make up that 3,000, we actually do have it divided between the different buckets of middle school co-curriculars, parenting place, open gym, and win. So, I'd have to see which portion goes to which, which we have those records, but it's actually made up of, we track all of the revenue and expenses between those four categories, we know how each program individually is doing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions or comments from board members?
Mr. McKenna, I'd move to designate classification of fund balance as of June 30th, 2024, specifically 150,000 to assigned, Leah, or Ms. Houser, does that sound okay?
Yes, please.
And 1.1 million to unassigned.
Uh, to revenue stabilization.
Do you want me to?
1.1 million to revenue stabilization.
Okay, 1.1 million to revenue stabilization, with the rest of the designations as presented.
A motion for Mr. Schulze, a second from Mr. Wells. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Ms. Behrens?
Yes.
Mr. Schulze?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Burns-Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yeah.
Motion carries 6-0, one absent. Discussion of possible action to approve additional 4K teacher and educational assistant due to enrollment.
I can't believe Sam's letting me do this, I just get giddy.
Well, I may regret this.
I mean, I might not stop. Okay, good, you just have to say yes. So, currently, we're at 105, since I just got two new ones, right, at Pop Cycles with the Principal? And we have four teachers, so that's more than 25 students per classroom, with the four teachers, that's way too many. You could ask me why it's way too many, and I could explain it, it's just 125, you know, students. I do understand that there's a para in there, but that para is very busy doing, you know, other tasks such as bathming, helping them out in the hall, that kind of stuff. So, at five teachers, we would still be at 20 to 21, which is still a healthy number, right? And we are nearing the end of July, but we do have a typical growth in July and August, around, I think last year it was 11 and 11, so 22, you know, we might grow 15 more students. There was just word today that St. John's has increased their enrollment, or their-
Tuition.
Tuition, so, you know, those were two of the students that we got today. So, there's things that are going to just play into this number that are not typical of years past also. And 4K is the one grade that really does grow a lot during the year. It actually grows in September a lot, because I think they're like, does that kid get on the bus? I have a kid that size, maybe I could call the school this, right? So, you know, we normally get about five in the first two weeks of school. So, you know, we're wanting to, I would say, do this the right way, right? We do not want to enter a year with 25 students, that's where we're at now. And as the numbers grow, I hope I get to be up here again, you know, truly, because then we're doing what we had set out to do, right? Our two-pronged approach of actually stopping the bleed and bringing kids and families back, right? They're very excited about this, and I'm excited to share in that excitement with them. So, we are asking for one teacher and another EA to bring our numbers down to 20 to 21. And, you know, I do have some numbers kind of worked out, where I think could be some other, like, breaking points, but we'll talk, like Sam and I and everybody, to talk about that. The one thing is, is that I would have to caution us about is, you know, we have for sure two rooms, but then we're going to move over to the K side, and then there's a domino effect of, like, movie classrooms, which can happen, and, but, you know, that might take a couple of weeks, right? If we have to continue to add classrooms, there will be a time when we have to start to order the furniture. We won't have some of those things, right? We would have to look at nutrition services and how that can be served. We're not there yet, but like I say, it's a good problem if we get there. But I do want to just once again say, I don't want to start the year and actually have to add a teacher, I don't think that's good practice, and I don't think it speaks well for the district. So, I would like to just be proactive as we're gaining new students, that I would share those numbers with you. Any question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think I only had four minutes.
Yep, I'll take the other minute.
Okay, good.
So, any employment tonight? We do, Diane does have a 4K teacher already picked out pending this action tonight, along with the educational assistant. If you do not go through with, if the board says, nope, we're good to go, we don't hire that 4K teacher, and the educational assistant would move to a special education assignment, so we're going to use that EA one way or another. So, but it's our recommendation to add a fifth 4K teacher, and we will be monitoring the situation as it comes, and if need be, we'll bring things back to the board as that is.
Questions or comments from board members? Mr. Schulze?
Ms. Eversen, Riley, so as far as the numbers of students, how are we tracking compared to last year, the year prior? I mean, are you, what are you seeing?
Yeah, so, the numbers have stayed pretty consistent, that we've always added about 20 in July and August, like, going back 10 years, right? So, that's with a half-day program. I'm assuming with a full-day program, we'll just get a couple of more than that too. So, once again, with tuition being increased at one of our competitors, we offer win at no cost, I think those are things that are going well in our benefit. So, I would say, gosh, I don't know how many we've added, I feel like we've added quite a few this month, actually, I'm sorry that I didn't have that number for you.
As far as the total, at the third Friday count last year, we had 124 4Kers at South Side, so we're still a little low, but we're doing all day where the 124 were out that day.
And we're, so, we're doing a little bit better than our projections, than what we originally thought, and as a reminder, we do not have a half-day teacher. It is, so if we, if we have 20 half-day precares, they are going in the morning, they're scattered throughout the, assumed to be possibly five teachers, and then they would leave, and it would be left for the full day. So, it's not 20 half-day students in one section into that, they're mixed around.
And we currently have 10 of those students, half-days.
Just to say, I think if I remember right, two years ago, it was 150.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yep, that was a bigger class.
Right.
Yep. We had 18 or 19 last year in our kindergarten, so that-
Well, that, to me, that makes sense, if that, those birth rates are declining, having that, like, would have used to stopping the gap.
Yeah.
Right?
And before, I know we're not talking, but we're talking about 4K. Dr. Wendy?
Yeah, I was going to ask, what, Montessori?
We're strong in Montessori.
We still have people calling and wanting to enroll, but we're full, we could possibly take maybe one more in each classroom, but there tends to be in August, a, like, relation of the governance board or something, so we have not accepted those in, but there probably will be two that we will accept or something.
Well, I will enthusiastically make the motion-
Thank you.
-to approve an addition of 4K teacher and EA, educational assistant due to enrollment as presented.
Motion from Mr. Schulze, second from Mr. Wells. Any further discussion? Including the available popsicles.
Yes, I could have all brought you popsicles, you all deserve it, thank you so much.
I do want to ask Dr. Wendy, so you said you have availability for one more student, what does that put your class sizes at?
They'll be 23 in each room.
Yeah, 23, okay. And you, so you think you could have, going into the first three weeks of school, how many additional students do you think you could have potentially that want to join the Montessori program?
We all are always getting calls, probably one to two a month, but once our enrollment is closed, it's closed because we still have a wait list.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for Mr. Schulze and a second for Mr. Wells? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Ms. Behrens?
Yes.
Mr. Schulze?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Burns-Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0, one absent. Discussion of possible action to approve grants and donations. Sam?
No board action needed, these three are all under 1,000, but we'd like to thank Figure Concert in the Park, the Supply Backpack Program, for a very generous donation, ALM Charities, for ADA supplies, with an extremely nice donation, and then K&amp;K Dean, for STEM Camp Sponsor, very nice generous donation as well.
Thank you to all those donors. Announcements and information?
All right. Summer school's wrapping up, we got a little over a week left, so the kids are getting excited about ending summer school, I'm sure. Our summer feeding program still goes through the middle of August, co-curriculars are starting to ramp up, football camp is this week, we have show choir camp, and this is one of the reasons why our kids are ready to go earlier in the year. So, there's a lot of excitement, but the weight room, the fitness room, the regular summer school, a lot of excitement, and we also start to see our staff moseying in as well. I do want to give a shout out to Ryan and his Buildings and Grounds and Maintenance Crew, working very hard around a lot of people's schedules to do that, and I know Mr. Steerman's working with the Meadowview Project as well, so a lot of moving pieces and a lot of coordination from our supervisors and directors, so thank you. This will be the 29th, we have a meeting coming up on the 29th, that will be here at SHS, and then in August, we'll move back to Meadowview, pending any changes in the wiring and everything right there, so, but, no, we're getting ready for the start of the school year, and staff coming back.
Discussion of possible actions, the board moved to close session, the Wisconsin Statute 19.85, paragraph 1, paragraph E, to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public property or the investment of public funds, or to conduct public business or competitive or bidding in perpetuation in pursuit of, to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, paragraph D, except as provided in S. 304.06-
Why aren't you reading?
You're doing great. Paragraph 1, paragraph EG, and by rule, this is-
You're doing good.
I can't even say it. Probably, ladies. Under S. 304.06, paragraph 1, paragraph DM, considering specific applications of probation, extended supervision or parole, or considering stated strategy for crime detection or prevention, which requires a closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Mr. Schulze, second from Mr. Burns-Gilbert. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Schulze?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Behrens?
Yes.
And Mr. Burns-Gilbert?
Yes.
We are in closed session.